Okay. Special voting meeting of the Mifflin County School District will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Knapp?
Here.
Mrs. Lachlan?
Here.
Mrs. Maidens? Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. Sharp?
Here.
Ms. Sigler?
Here.
Mr. Steyer?
Here.
Mrs. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Wise?
Here.
Okay, communication reports. Amy, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. School board members, do you have anything to report at this time?
I do. This is Noah. I have an issue that that came across to me about, um, actually the Kish Indians using the field at the Indian Valley Elementary School, which they've used for thirty years plus, something like that. And apparently they got an email from Tish McClay stating they can no longer use it. I would like to know the reasoning behind that because I am part of the Central Keystone Football League, which also I'm representing the other teams in it. I'd like to know who made that decision and why.
Okay, help me out here. Mr. E Step. We, that was put, wasn't that sent to Mr. Knapp? And Mr. Knapp gave us, advised us on that situation?
Yeah, uh, I don't know if Noah has that. Noah, do you still have that folder? That I get, that folder that I gave you?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, let me see if I have a. Okay, it's, it's kind of a long email. I don't know if you want me to read it or not.
Nah, just hit the specifics of it here.
Okay, hang on, let me. Shoot. I had glasses and now I can't find them. Uh.
I can turn in here a little bit. I mean, the gist of it was, we, uh, we sent it to Oris and Oris said that if we allowed groups to use, outside groups to use our facilities, that we could be, uh, have a loss in CARES funding. And that we wouldn't know how to dictate, you know, there's no more than two hundred and fifty people at an outside gathering. And that includes, uh, players, fans, officials, coaches, everybody. The, the whole entity of that.
Okay, okay. Well, first of all, I don't consider them an outside organization. These kids are in our schools. So first of all, that's my first point. Second of all, if, if, if we're gonna allow them to use it and continue using it like they were, and whatever mandates or recommendations come upon us, like everybody else, I'm sure they would abide by them just like everybody else. I'm getting a little tired of the youth programs in this county. These kids are in our schools. And the school district doesn't have, have the teams for them. They don't have youth football. They don't have youth baseball, youth team ball. They don't have any of that. But these kids are in our schools and we have these programs for them. Because Mifflin County School District does not. And again, these kids are in our schools. They are not an outside program.
I for one back up Noah on this one. That's Fred Nickel. I, I, I think Noah has a, a good reasoning behind it. I, I believe that those fields are paid for by taxpayers. And I think those kids should be allowed to use them.
There, the whole thing behind it was we'll lose funding. We could lose funding if outside, outside organizations are allowed to use our properties. Is that what I'm? Is that what I'm understanding?
I think, I think what Oris was saying is, let's say an outside organization. I don't know if this, Tish, you'll have to help me. I don't know if this has more to do with non-PI double A sanction or outside by definition under the board's policy. But I think what Oris is.
It can't be by board policy because we've already let them use it. They've been using it.
We, we, we've let a lot of outside groups and by outside, our terminology of that is it's not a Mifflin County School District sponsored activity.
So nobody can walk.
It's my understanding and I'm not. And I'm not the one that.
Shoot basketball in the hoops. Nobody can play tennis. Nobody can walk on the property. Period.
John, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, based on the precedent of past interpretation, from what I have been told since I've been athletic director, and I'm not the one making the decisions. This came all from people way above me. What I am told is if it's not a Mifflin County School District sponsored sport, then they have to complete the facility use forms, which would make them an outside entity. Is my understanding. If I'm incorrect, someone please step in.
Okay.
That is my, that's my interpretation of what an outside entity entails.
Okay, what, what is Reddsville Athletic Association then? Is that outside?
Yes, it would be.
Then why are we recommending approval, uh, of a renewal of a ten year lease program between Reddsville Association, uh, and Mifflin County School District for the softball field out of I V E C property? And we can't have it both ways, people. We can't.
Well, first of all, uh, with regard to the Reddsville Athletic Association, they actually. May I speak, please? You ask a question, I wanna, I wanna give you an answer. The Reddsville Athletic Association rents those fields from the school district. There's a resolution that's on the agenda that has to be passed to say that the school district still does not need those fields. If that resolution isn't passed, then the lease with Reddsville Athletic Association is discontinued. The football situation is different. Uh, the governor has made it clear that you're in the midst of a pandemic and he has rules that he's putting into place. And if any governmental entities, school districts, other municipalities, et cetera, don't follow those mandates, he's gonna cut CARES funding. He said it numerous times. The problem is, is if you have more than two hundred and fifty people gathered at any, any sort of gathering outside, and they don't comply with all the other rules regarding you have to have masks on, et cetera, you are risking your CARES funding that's going to be distributed by the, by the Commonwealth. That, that, that is the reasoning behind it. Additionally.
What if they do comply?
You're, you've got a committee of folks that, that brought this. And they said, your safety and health committee, and they said that, you know, their recommendation was not to permit outside groups. Would I take a look at it? I agree. Under the circumstances, you know, it's, it's impossible to really comply with, with what the governor's asking for. And you would be ceding control to whoever's on site. And you would be risking your funding based on somebody else. You can do what you like. You, you also, you can also go to your insurance company and talk to them about it because you had summer camp that was canceled for the very same reasons within, within your schools. And, you know, you had a, a dance recital with Stephanie Corbich's school that was canceled, you know, at, at the end of the school year under similar circumstances. So, you know, it, it is a pattern. And it's a pattern because of the fact that we're in the midst of a pandemic. Hopefully one day this is over and everything can go back to the way that it was before. And there's no issue with any of those groups, the dance school, the football league, any of them using the facilities. But under the current situation that you're in with the governor's dictate, you gotta do what you have to. And you gotta protect that CARES money. Because that's hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars that you're putting at risk.
So you're saying.
Okay, well, I wanna know, first of all, I wanna know who's on the Health and Safety Committee for Mifflin County School District? I've never got a memo or anything stating anything about it, or who's even on it? Well, no. I think the board has the right to know that, wouldn't you think?
The names are on documents that you received this week.
What documents?
It's on Mr. Wise.
Mr. Wise, this is Vance. We have, I'm on the committee. Cindy Marsh is on the committee. We have various principals that are on the committee. It's, it was the same protocol when we closed school in March. And then Mr. E Step contacted me over the weekend and said that you brought forward this question. So we had a, a meeting Monday morning. And I went ahead and brought up to the meeting, up to the committee members. I said, hey, we, we have a board member that would like us to look at doing outside events. Um, they have their own porta pott. We wouldn't be coming inside the school buildings to use any restrooms, et cetera. There was not a unanimous agreeance to permit that and change the health and safety plan. Because it was divided, I asked Mr. E Step if Mrs. Marsh and I could contact Oris Knapp as a solicitor and run this past him. And that's where we are right now with what Mr. Knapp provided as your solicitor. We asked him for legal input on this.
Uh huh. So, so are Mifflin County Athletics would be continuing at this point, correct?
Yeah, that's, no, that's correct. As of right now, we haven't gotten a governmental order shutting it down.
Well, what I would like to do, I would like this situation actually on the agenda for next week and a roll call item. Then the people can know, then the people can say.
Okay.
And my question goes back to the Athletic Association. Are they gonna use the field during, uh, the pandemic?
Which way they are?
Not if, not if we're saying no outside groups can use the field.
So they're gonna be paying for a renewal of the lease?
I think they're paying one dollar, if I remember correctly.
I believe that's correct.
But they're gonna fall under the same pandemic rules as anybody else?
Uh, I'm not understanding what you mean, Fred.
Well, if they have a softball game, are they gonna be allowed to play on the field during the pandemic?
As long as the district is, is issuing guidance that there is no outside group allowed on the field?
But they are an outside group, Jim.
Huh?
Regional Athletic Group is an outside group.
I know. I'm, I'm saying, because they're an outside group, if we are issuing, if we as a district say no outside groups can use the field during, until the thing's lifted, then if, even if they have a contract for the field, they are not gonna be able to use it during the pandemic.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But that doesn't necessarily mean you have to tell them they can't have a contract because ten years. And I think they pay a buck.
If, if you're throwing guidelines out there, which you are, two hundred and fifty people, whatever it is, I'm sure that the youth programs would abide by that just like everybody else. So what's the problem?
Well, you, you want us to put it on for the, uh, roll call so we can do that.
I absolutely do.
Yeah, we can do that.
I think, I think in the best interest of time, that's what we should do. I think pretty, everybody pretty much has an idea of how people feel about this. It'll give them some time to process it. And then let's, uh, bring it to closure next week.
Okay, I'll make sure it's on roll call.
Mr. E Step, you also should let Tony Willard at Kish know because your insurance company.
Right.
They, they, they were strongly opposed to you, uh, having a, a summer program in your schools. And you could find yourself in a situation where they're gonna deny any insurance co- coverage. You ought to get that before the meeting next week.
Yep, will do.
Yeah, I can contact, um, the insurance agent about that.
Okay, is there any other board member have anything to report at this time?
Amazing.
Mr. E Step?
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll save my comments for when we get to the committee of the whole. Uh, the only thing on the agenda this evening for this special voting, actually I will make a statement. Our original intent tonight for the special voting meeting was to have two items for approval. The first of which was going to be a, uh, required health and safety plan that we have to get not only board approval for, but also approval from the Department of Education. Uh, this morning, we were finalizing the presentation portion for this evening's meeting. And, uh, through a source closely linked to the state, we got a heads up that, there were, there were going to be further directives coming from the Department of Health and the governor's office. Uh, that was at around nine o'clock. And the person could not, at the time, the, the information was considered embargoed. They could not share the details of what was coming, just that it was coming. And we were literally sitting together doing this final presentation preparation. And we said to the person, well, that's great. We're getting ready to present this all tonight. What's this mean? And the person advised us, uh, I strongly encourage you not to proceed with your plan because you're most likely going to have to change it. Uh, so, that's what prompted my letter to the public this morning, saying that we are postponing that presentation. We did just receive the guide, the, uh, guidance at around three o'clock this afternoon. I've gotten to skim the guidance briefly. But with all the other, uh, phone traffic, text traffic, email traffic that I've been contending with since three P M, right up to the start of this meeting, uh, I've only gotten to skim it once. So our team is going to read and review that guidance and directives over the weekend. And then we are convening, uh, a meeting on Monday at, Vance, would you help me with the time?
One o'clock.
We're convening a meeting at one o'clock to compare the updated guidance against the previous guidance and against the completed plan that we had spent. I can't tell you how many man hours on, but it was a lot. And then we'll, we'll adjust our plan accordingly. One thing I would like to say on the board's behalf for the general public is that, uh, we recognize and are as equally frustrated as many people in the public are with not knowing for sure what's going to happen. Uh, when, when, when the nine board members are sworn in uh, to become board members, part of their swearing in involves, uh, a commitment to upholding the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. As a superintendent, anytime my contract's renewed, I have to be sworn in before the, uh, district judge. And I have to make that same, uh, commitment to uphold the Constitution of the, of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Once you have to uphold that commitment to that Constitution, the general public needs to understand that that, within that Constitution, the governor, as well as the secretary of the Department of Health, they do have, uh, rights to issue executive orders in emergency sort of, uh, situations such as this. Therefore, if the governor of the Department of Health issued, issues an order or a directive as a commissioned officer of the state, for me, and as state representatives sworn to duly, uh, defend and protect that Constitution, board members, uh, hands become somewhat tied to the will of the executive order. Have I explained that correctly, Oris?
Uh, I was muted. Yes. I mean, and, and that's the same reason, you know, the email that I'm, I'm gonna forward it to all board members that I sent to Mr. Varner and you. You know, it's, the governor's the one that's making the rules. This isn't Tish McClay or Oris Knapp making these rules. There's a, as I said in the email, there's stuff that the governor's done that I disagree with. But my job is to try to protect the district from any issues. Hence the advice that I gave under the circumstances. And the board can vote on it and do what they like as a public body. But you have to understand the governor has made those threats and I think he's serious about it.
Yes. And, uh, so what I wanted to say to the general public is, it might be, maybe through lack of understanding of, of that commitment board members have to make, that in the frustration with not knowing, it might be, uh, a natural tendency to lash out at board members. And what I would like to say is, uh, this is not the board's fault. It's, it's not really anybody's fault when, when we have to, uh, concur or, or adhere to what we're directed to do. I don't have a problem if, uh, folks lash out at me, even if I'm not in control of it. Uh, I get paid very well to get called every name in the book, so, so be it. But board members are paid, they're unpaid volunteers. And they're just doing what they're supposed to do under the Constitution of the Commonwealth. So we, and, and I can assure you that the nine of them, because I've had, I'm having constant communications with them and I, and all of our teaching staff and administrators and support staff. We are all very frustrated by this. Um, we thought we had a plan. And I will tell the public very candidly that our plan was to bring the kids back, four, four out of five days. We wanted to have them physically here. And the fifth day, we would use as an online day, day to keep in practice with online and to allow our custodial maintenance crew to do deep cleaning for the protection of the kids. That was the original plan. That plan may now change. And even the plan that we roll out to the board for approval next Thursday night, after we've had a chance to review these updated guidelines and directives, even the plan that we may approve next Thursday, could change one, two, three, four times between now and August twenty sixth. Not because we want to change it, but because, uh, the pandemic, the governmental reaction to the pandemic and so on forces our hand. So that's, that's what I will say. So the only item remaining on the, uh, agenda for the special voting meeting is the, the recommendation to fill an open, uh, assistant principal spot. That's all that's left.
I have a question.
Yes, Beth.
Okay, so the plan that you had spent numerous man hours and a great deal of taxpayer dollars to prepare for us this evening.
Not just me, but a whole group of people.
I, I understand. You was the collective. You.
Yeah.
What, was there a deadline for us to ratify that? Did, did we have a deadline for that?
Uh, Cindy, are you still on the call? Or Vance, you can answer that.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Lachlan, they're actually, the only deadline was, we were supposed to get it approved before the summer was over. And part of that improvement is, at first, it's, it's multiple of three steps. One, we have to get you guys as the nine governing bodies, person, government body to approve it. Then we send it off to the state for P D E approval. While that is taking place, we are required to post on a school website for the public to view and know what's going on. So, like I said.
So there was a deadline, basically, because until it got through the review process at P D E and got posted online, we needed to have it back to us before school starts next month.
Right. And Beth, our goal, and just, just to further go where I think you're heading, we wanted to get it done now because we know parents are anxious and wanna be able to make plans for, you know, how they're gonna deal with things. That's why we were trying to get this approved originally tonight. Um, and it would still be my hope that we can get a plan approved next Thursday, the twenty third, again, so parents have adequate time to make plans. What I don't know without, with only having skim read the updates, is whether or not our optimal plan of four days physically here at school per week for every child, we don't now, now know for sure whether we're gonna be able to do that or if we're gonna have to use one of the other of the three options that we had put in play.
Well, I understand all of the hard work that everyone has put into this plan. I appreciate that. And I know that the focus has been on getting our kids back to school because online learning in this environment, we have lost kids. They have dropped off the radar. Is that not correct?
Um, you mean back in the spring?
Yeah.
Some, yes, that happened with some kids, absolutely.
And those are more than likely our most vulnerable students that we have lost track of. So in other words, the governor is putting his political interests and mandating the entire state follow something that is not necessarily required by the entire state, but certain hotspots. And that particular mandate is also going to put our children at risk because there are areas of the state that do not have the broadband capacity to provide an adequate education to our students. So I urge everybody on this meeting to make sure that the governor's office understands that rural Pennsylvania respects the need for our children to receive the education that they deserve and that we're paying for. And that means that we need them in the school, in a seat, whenever possible. And we will not take whatever he decides that we need to take. We need to have a voice. We need to speak up. Because otherwise, our children are going to be left behind.
I agree with you, Beth, especially with our students that are struggling. Uh, the special needs students, and I've had parents talk to me about how, how are special needs students gonna be able to learn online? And they need hands-on, you know, face-to-face contact with, uh, you know, special need teachers. I, I don't know. I agree with you a hundred percent, Beth. I think we gotta get back to school.
And Fred, don't forget about the C, our academy students, the C T C. They need to be hands-on. I don't want the academy to go backwards.
You can't, you can't teach hands-on stuff like machining and, and welding and carpentry and agriculture. You can't teach that online. You can't. Yeah, I'm sorry. I did it for ten years and I'll tell you. You can't teach it online.
Could I, could I also add a comment that might be something that some members of the public don't know? I know in a time like this, uh, like, let's say Mifflin County residents find out that because of the way the mandates work, instead of us being able to go four days a week, uh, you know, in the seats, we can only go three or two, or whatever it turns out to be. I know possibly some people may react by saying, well, then I'm just gonna pull my kid out and maybe send them, send them to, uh, charter, cyber charter school or whatever. Cyber, cyber charter schools, well, brick and mortar charter schools, I believe, still have to follow the same mandates that the rest of us do, if I'm not mistaken in what I read. But the cyber charter schools, I know that their radio and television ads always advertise that the education is free. I just wanna make sure our pa- taxpayers understand that it's actually not free. For the, over the past three years alone, uh, Mifflin County School District has been billed around six million dollars by charter schools and, and cyber charter schools for tuition payments. Those tuition payments are a line item in the school district budget. And in previous years, I was budgeting one point eight five million a year. That then jumped to, uh, I believe, two point two million a year. And in this coming year's budget, I believe we either budgeted two point five or two point seven million. So every time somebody enrolls in a cyber school, not only do we lose the student to their local school, but the, the people who are, who are enrolling them are actually adding a tax burden possibly to an elderly parent of their own, or to their neighbor or their friends or whatever. And I don't think the average taxpayer necessarily realizes that. friends, or whatever. And I don't think the average taxpayer necessarily realizes that. Because I think the way the advertising is done, it just makes it sound like it's free. But the fact is, Mifflin County's taxpayers have already put $6 million into tuition for other people's kids. And that number's only going to keep going up because the way the law as it is written is so poorly developed that it guarantees all school districts tuition costs to go up each and every year. And in the case of Mifflin County, if you are thinking about withdrawing and going into a cyber school or a charter school, I'd ask that you please consider, before doing that, talk to one of our employees. His name is Chris Gill. He, his name, you can find his email address on the district website. He is in charge of our own blended and online learning programs called Alpha and MCO. Alpha targets grades seven through 12, and MCO targets grades K to six. Do I have that correct, Vance?
Yes, you do.
Okay. And we can offer anything that a charter or a cyber school can offer, and it's half the cost because we already have the program in place. We've had 500 of our students each of the last two years take at least one course in our Alpha and MCO programs. It's been very successful. You get a Mifflin County diploma when you graduate from it. You can schedule in a way where you can still participate in, at the academy if you want to. You can participate in athletics. You can participate in band, clubs, all kinds of extracurricular activities. And you can customize your child's schedule any way you want. If you want your child to come in physically and sit in the seat for, say, math and science, but you want them to be able to do English and social studies online, we can do that. So, I just wanted to make sure I tried to educate the people about the real cost of charter and cyber charter schools, and how much it's taking out of our taxpayers' pockets each year.
And Mr. Eastep, we provide transportation as well for modified days.
Yes.
Yeah, it's that standing opportunity for our young people.
Yes.
If I could say something, I'm not interrupting anyone, am I?
No.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you who worked on the plans. I know you've been working since March, developing various scenarios, because we never knew what was going to happen exactly, and we still don't. So, I'd like to thank you all. I know you all put a lot of time in. I would like to mention, since the special ed program was brought up, and of course, the academy, there are district plans out there that address these needs for the special ed and also for the hands-on learning. Because the special ed requirements result in much smaller classes, there are those districts who, while they may not be able to send all of the students to classes every day, they are sending their special education students to classes every day. Likewise, a creative plan could be developed for the academy. I know there is a definite hands-on need at the academy. So, we may have to be looking at different ways to be equitable with all of our students, but remember that being equitable is not necessarily doing everything the same way for everybody, because everybody's needs are different.
That's correct.
I'd also like to mention that, yes, it is important that we are equitable, but our elementary students are the ones that have, we've discovered, do the worst at online learning only. And you cannot miss third grade and be successful. You need third grade. You need to be at leading level. You need third grade.
You mean basically K to three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you miss third grade, you miss a lot. We need our elementary students in the seat as often as we can get them in the seat. Because if we don't, they're never going to catch up.
Excuse me.
Is that a board member? Okay, is this, is this Megan?
That was me trying to speak, yes.
Okay, Megan, you'll, we absolutely want to hear from you. Right now, what we're in is the communications from the board.
Okay.
But there's going to be an opportunity for public comment right after we vote on the one item on here. So, just make sure you announce yourself, and then you can go ahead and, you know, absolutely can make your comment. Okay?
Actually, public comment occurs before the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. You'll be able to do it after the reports here. So, just listen for it.
And Mr. Eastep, do you have anything else?
Nothing else at this time for me.
Okay, Mr. Varner?
No, no thanks.
Dr. O'Donnell?
I have nothing for the special meeting.
Mr. Eastep, is there anything to report with regard to Buildings and Grounds?
Just that progress continues at East Derry. I have not heard anything with relation to running into snags. I don't know if John, because you've been down there, if you've heard anything to the contrary, or not.
All going good.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to say to the board is that I had originally planned to use tonight, as I said earlier, to talk about the reopening plans, and now and then I was going to use next Thursday to bring McClure in to share with us further information that they have developed since having the walkthrough at Highland Park. Given everything that's happening, I think we're going to need to push that back because we're probably going to be doing all the presenting we planned to do tonight, next Thursday. And that's going to take a lot of time. So, we'll probably have to push McClure back to August. And I have not even talked to them to let them know that yet. That's it from Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you. Mr. Net, is there anything to report from the academy?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, public comment.
Yes, hello, can everybody hear me?
We can hear, we're just not sure.
This is Brent Erb.
Thanks, Brent.
Hi, I'm one of the parents at Reedsville with regards to baseball and softball, actually. And just had some thoughts about the discussion that we had earlier regarding field usage. So, am I hearing correctly the fact that we probably won't be able to use any of those fields for either football, baseball, or softball this fall? Is that what I'm hearing?
That will depend, because Noah has requested that it be brought up for a vote next week. So, if five board members vote to allow it, then it would, then, you know, the board vote would stand.
So, the rule regarding 250 outside, I can tell you for a fact, I'm right now at a baseball game, and I literally counted people, and I do not count any more than about 75 people, including, sorry?
That was somebody's not muted.
So, my point is, I cannot count any more than about 75 people, including the players and coaches. So, I would say, at least from a baseball perspective, we're well below the 250 count required. So, as far as use of the field, and in my particular interest, again, the softball field at IDEC, we could have games that are easily below the requirement of 250 people. And as far as the lease goes, it's my understanding that field is leased. Now, I may be splitting hairs here, and again, just to add to my commentary, that field is leased. I wonder if that makes a difference in terms of usage or not, because, again, my understanding is the RAA pays for a lease to use that field, even though it's on school property. I get that. I just wanted to comment and underscore the fact that it's a lease to possibly have use of that field in the fall. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time?
Real quick, Diane Shear. Yesterday, I had an association meeting with AMC members. Over 200 teachers were online, and they're very concerned about a lot of different things. No teacher is worried about working. Everybody wants to get back to work. Would love to be there five days a week with the students. But with the social distancing, masks, students who have immune compromised systems, along with teachers who have immune compromised systems, or family members, all these things come into play. And we know we have a faculty that is very stressed out about anyone getting sick. We in Mifflin County, lucky, the virus has not hit us very hard yet, and we would like to see that continue. So, we would like to continue working with the district as far as coming up with ideas on how to protect our students and staff. And that's kind of all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time?
Yes.
Is that Megan or Angie? Megan?
Go ahead, Angie. Okay, hi, everybody. I do have a public comment, and it doesn't have anything to do with what's been discussed at the meeting, so I do apologize for diverting. But I'm here tonight just to speak on behalf to the school board on a property that is going to be coming to you for approval, for a property that's on repository on Chestnut Street in downtown Lewistown. I have been working with my friend and business partner, trying to lead some advocacy to revitalize the Third Street, Valley Street, and Chestnut Street area. And in the process of doing that, over the last 60 days, it came to my attention that there's a Chestnut Street property that was in threat of being torn down if a field bidder, which was going to be the Habitat for Humanity, was going to demo the building to then put it up, to put up some townhomes. And in the process, I, we did have another bidder come in, a local business owner who is actually interested in trying to restore the property and also bring a business of mixed use back into that space. The reason that I'm getting specifically involved with this is because I care a great deal about historic preservation and restoration, and believe that for the revitalization of what is left in our downtown area, that still is a blank canvas that needs to be addressed for further revitalization in downtown Lewistown, that it's really important to try to save our places. And this property is definitely one of those blighted and properties that need addressed, and it's kind of late in the game. But we did get a bid that the high bid is the local business owner. But my understanding for repository properties is that all three taxing entities, Lewistown Borough, Mifflin County Commissioners, and all of you as the school board have to be the ones to also approve that high bid within 45 days. I did send over a flyer that I had created for public support for an advocacy effort to the secretary, and she can provide that to the school board members. And my contact information is on there if you want to ask me any further questions between now and when that would come across the school board. But really, we're just kind of looking at, really wanting to see more incremental development in that once thriving neighborhood, and just kind of to look at restoration as being more long-term best economic and environmental option as it maintains our city fabric and keeps irreplaceable resources out of the landfill. We do want to try to see a created walkable community. And I've lived here my whole life. I live in the borough, and I do understand the challenges that exist in those neighborhoods, but I do not believe that they are beyond being able to be revitalized. And there is a new movement, even in the spite of COVID right now, that we have a lot of young entrepreneurs, we have young developers that are buying properties and doing right by them in our downtown area. And I will tell you that in my efforts, I have had almost 90% plus positive feedback on the idea to try to create a collaborative effort with these like-minded people. So, I just ask that when that comes up for approval, that just from a community advocacy part, that you, I'm imploring you to please consider accepting that repository bid from the business owner.
And Angie, I don't know if you can see it, but we did go ahead and display it on the Zoom.
Yes, and thank you. I really appreciate that. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, I have no problems with Habitat for Humanity. I think what they do is fantastic. But how I got involved in all of this is the Five Points Building came up for sale that the Moores had renovated, and it's a linchpin property going down Valley Street to try to create an effort. And the property that's in threat of coming down is directly across the road, invisible site of the New Fountain, the Five Points Building. And to build something new there, you know, it just really kind of takes that opportunity away. And, you know, just one other thing to consider, you know, to put housing there on a street that is right beside a very busy intersection, and also is beside a BFW bar, as well as going down the street as well. There's still some drug issues that are in that area that need to be addressed. And when we think about a walkable community in that complete area, Chestnut Street commands some of the most amazing architecture that we have in our downtown.
Angie.
And so, I just think we really need to save it.
Angie, excuse me.
Yes.
We've got to try and keep this at five minutes.
That's fine, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
And thanks for all that you do, guys.
Thank you.
Any other public, any other public comment?
Hey, I think there was maybe Ryan Snook that was trying to raise his hand through the chat thing or something. Ryan, I don't know if you're still out there and you need to ask something or say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted.
You muted yourself. Now you're unmuted, okay.
I basically just wanted to say what Beth had said about keeping the idea in there that not everybody has reliable internet, and that the kids might not be able to fulfill whatever the internet one says. Because like, I live out here in Stroegs, I don't get very good internet. And, I mean, we've been trying to get Comcast out here for, I don't know, 15, 20 years.
Right.
But, so, basically, just got to, I would like for you guys to keep in mind when you make that plan, to keep us in mind that are out farther, might not have as good internet or internet at all.
Yes, Ryan, that's a good point, and we actually are very aware of that through the parent survey we did. I believe if I'm, I might be misquoting a statistic. Dr. O'Donnell's going to be presenting some of this next week, but I think approximately 13%, or it's either 13% or 17% of the community does not have reliable internet. So, any plan that we make, if it involves internet, we obviously have to also plan to make accommodations for the kids who are in those areas that don't have great access. And that, that alternative could come in a number of forms. I know that one of the things that our technology director was trying to work on with us through the CARES funding, and I can't remember if we still have it in there, was creating hotspots. Doug, I can't remember if that's still part of the mix anymore.
We discussed that hot-
Um, we discussed that, uh, hotspots, um, and, and other solutions. Uh, we've also discussed in the, uh, grant, uh, that we're working on with the county for the hotspots they're putting out. There's several things in discussion as possibilities.
Um, also Ryan, I do want to let you know that I received an email from a community member earlier this week. She forwarded me an email that she had sent to the commissioners, uh, basically requesting that if they get significant, uh, federal funds and for the pandemic, that they consider maybe putting those toward, uh, broadband development.
I have a question real quick. Um, are we certain? How many people didn't do the survey because they don't have internet?
Uh, we had 2,300 responses.
We, we also had done a previous survey via phone. Um, and Dr. O'Donnell, I have compared the survey results and, um, I think they were very close. Uh, so one was conducted by phone earlier and the other one was conducted on the internet, uh, via Google, uh, docs.
All right. So, so 2,300 out of how many?
Well, there's approximately 4,800 students, 47, 47 something.
Uh, I'm actually full, so I'm not even going to eat one, but you'll like one.
I believe what he was trying to get at is the people that didn't, uh, don't have internet.
Wouldn't have gotten it, Ryan. Is that what you were trying to say? I, I think I know what he was trying to say. That is, yes.
If you remember, we had, MRF Radio did an announcement and then we also offered up three days for anyone to go to any of our school buildings and the, or, and/or the administration building to complete a survey.
Right. Plus the phones.
That's we, yeah, we did not US mail all five, all 4,900 parents, but we did do a public service announcement through MRF Radio as well.
Correct.
Um, yeah, I believe that's what the, the other gentleman was trying to say.
Yeah.
Not everybody might not have gotten it, which, if they got this notice, more than likely they got at least one of those.
Yeah, they should in theory have gotten the phone call or the, uh, the opportunity to do the in-person response.
And then the, the other thing that I had was, um, when you guys are putting this plan in, uh, and what, would you guys please keep in mind, like, I believe it was, I don't know who said it, but it was about masks. Some of, some of the children cannot wear them. So there should be some kind of alternate or something else that can be done.
We've been given some guidance on that and that will, that will be relayed out to the public, um, as part of what we present next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah. Hi, this is Aaron Bobb. Um, I'm also here representing the Reedsville Athletic Association. I just wanted to come back to that real quick and point out. Um, the field that is in question is actually owned by the Reedsville Athletic Association. It's not owned by the school district. Um, all we simply are asking is to lease the ground that that field is on. Um, so I think that, uh, some of the discussion earlier about the facility use form and whether games could be played or not. And we would certainly follow any guidelines the school district would want to put in. But the field is actually owned by the Reedsville Athletic Association. We're simply trying to lease the ground that the field is on again.
We have a question in the chat box about online classes.
Yes, from Melody. Uh, this is from Melody Knapp or yeah, Knapp. Um, if you move to online classes, what is your plan? Will it be like last year with the PDFs online? Question mark. Or will it be more like a program that MCO has? What I'd like to do if possible, and, and I'm not trying to, uh, get out of responding tonight, but since we are reviewing the new updated guidelines and regulations, um, all of this was intended to be explained tonight and all of this is intended to be explained next week. Um, I think it would be premature or, or it might be redundant if we go into detail on what that will be. I think it's a very good question from Melody. And if Melody could, could find it, uh, time next week to, to get back on our meeting next week, uh, she should be able to hear the answers to that. And if she doesn't hear those answers, uh, I would encourage Melody to, uh, speak up again during public comment if she doesn't feel those, those questions were answered substantially during Dr. O'Donnell's presentation next week.
Any other public comment?
Yes, me, Megan Berry.
Go ahead, Megan.
Okay. Um, so I am one of those parents that am truly probably moving my children to one of the charter online schools. I came here tonight to be impressed. I'm not. Um, the first thing that was brought up was politics and I don't think that that was something that even should have brought up your opinions or your opinions, but you're on a public forum here. You didn't need to bring politics into this. Um, Beth, I think her name is, kept bringing up that we have to get the children in their chair and we can't let them miss third grade. My child missed third grade last year because somebody dropped the ball on the program that we needed at the end of the year. That stuff was so below him, there was no point of him even doing it. So I want to make sure that when you move forward, that you make sure that whatever program you have makes it worth people's time because that's why you're going to lose people and the parents who aren't involved. So you're going to lose it there. And the other thing that you didn't impress me with tonight is nobody talks about teacher safety except for Mrs. Shear. Who's protecting the teachers? What's going to happen when a teacher is sick? Are you going to quarantine the entire class? Are you going to have somebody that's actually going to want to come in and substitute? Like, how are you planning on handling all of that, like in that situation? I, I care about our teachers and the Melly teachers are amazing people. So their safety is number one to me. I won't send my child four days a week to a school. There's no way. Not during this time, but I want to know how you're keeping our teachers safe.
Okay, um, Megan, uh, you, you obviously, you know, have pretty strong feelings about it. I can't speak to the politics part because I didn't address this in a political way. And as far as, uh, you're not being impressed with our plan, but we, we haven't given you the plan yet.
I saw your plan. You were going to have them go four days a week.
That was one option. That was one option.
Okay, that was one option. So you plan on sending our children in there four days a week? So I'm asking, how are you keeping them safe and the teacher safe for four days?
That, that is part of the health and safety plan.
Okay, I'll look forward to seeing that.
Which we haven't done, but again, that was one option of three.
Okay, but your online program's not going to impress me because the end of the year was a shit show.
Well, it sounds like your mind's made up, so maybe.
I guess it is. And you're really acting really mature as a superintendent with those responses. You have a whole community of people that are waiting for answers.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not acting anyway. I'm saying it sounds like your mind's made up.
Okay, all right. Go about your business.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Yes, I have something. Dell Fuller.
Okay, go ahead Fuller.
Um, a little bit off topic here with, with what we've been going over tonight. Uh, I'm going to share a screen with a letter that I have written and some of this comes from, uh, students that I've had in class. Uh, I lost where it's over here. So whenever I, whenever I'm in class and I teach 11th grade, I teach Democracy in Action at the high school. And over the past several years, I've watched, uh, some events and I've had students come to me and tell me certain things. So, you know, at the beginning, what would have been around the end of our school year, we saw, um, George Floyd and, and all the protests that broke out afterwards and the Black Lives Matter that broke out afterwards. And, and all that piece with racism and racism has not died down in the United States. It, it's still out there, is still very prevalent. And one of the things that I have seen over the, oh, nine, 10 years I've been in the district is when I first started, I hardly ever saw a Confederate flag on a student or a student wearing one. I might see one, one or two a week. Over the past three to four years, I have probably seen eight to 10 of them a day in my building. Um, so in, in this statement that I have, one of my students wrote and said, when I saw people in high school walking around wearing anything with a Confederate flag on it, I felt like I wasn't welcome in my own town. I was afraid of these people because most of them did not know I was mixed. So they just assumed I was well, white. I felt like I had to keep my identity a secret because what if they found out and decided they didn't want me there anymore and caused trouble for my family? The Confederate flag in my eyes and most people's colors eyes screams, I hate black people. I personally think the Confederate flag should not be allowed to be worn in school because people should feel, should be, because schools should be a safe place, not a place where students have to worry about their safety. If you need more experiences, let me know. I had a kid in my 10th grade bio class sit there and make racist jokes the whole period until I started crying and laughed. I didn't come back to school for a week. I'm sure they would both love to speak on it. And then a couple of years, and then she also wrote, in, in a couple of years, my younger brother will be there and I don't want him to have to experience what I experienced. I had another student here, um, talked about how most of the time it was on, on the CTC bus going back and forth. Or, or that's where most of he, he experienced more of the racism. And that he thinks it should not be worn or flown in school. Um, you know, I'm a 20-year veteran. Uh, I, I've had kids tell me that the Confederate flag is part of their heritage. And to be part of your heritage, it has to be something that you inherit. And I would say that, you know, most people in, in Pennsylvania, their, their family members probably fought, if they have family members to go back that far in that area, in our area, probably fought on the side of the north, which was not fighting with the Confederacy, which left the Union and fought against our country. So to me this, you know, I, I spent 20 years in the army and when the Marine Corps comes out and says that the battle Confederate battle flag has all too often been co-opted by violent extremist and racist groups, whose divisive beliefs have no place in our core. Um, you know, whenever they say something like that, because it undermines their ability to train soldiers. Well, I think it undermines our ability to teach our students when we have a kid in class who might be sitting there and another kid in class hates him just because he's wearing something. We have prohibitions of wearing, uh, you can't wear something that says Miller Lite or Bud Light or something on it, or, or someone's wearing a Nazi flag. We don't allow them to wear that and make them change it. Or I had a kid this past year, I sent him to the office because he had, uh, socks on with, with marijuana plants on it and that caused a big uproar. It took me 15 minutes when he came back to class to get class back to normal. So it, it creeped, it has the potential more so this year, I think, with causing a disruption. And I think it's something that we should probably not allow to be worn in our school. Thank you.
Good point, Mr. Fuller. Thank you. Any other public comment?
There, there have been some, um, people doing hand raising in the, and Doug's been relaying it to me. Uh, before I, I'm going to go to, uh, Stephen Albert in a second. Uh, before I go to Stephen, I'd like to go back to Megan. Megan, uh, my email address is jae13@mifflincounty or at mcsdk12.org. Uh, I would encourage you, if you're willing to email me your contact info and I will reach out to you personally to discuss, uh, what you're concerned about or where you're feeling we're falling short. Um, Stephen Albert asks, so what do you do when both parents work and the kids need to do online classes? I believe that was something that was brought up in the, I don't remember if I sent it on July 7th, but there was a previous letter where I said, or encouraged parents that because we don't know for sure what's going to be happening, uh, to at least have plans for the possibility of day or days, um, uh, that they might need, uh, either to make arrangements for a parent or a relative or, or a babysitter to be with the kids, um. I, that's, that's the only advisement I could have for that. Um, there was also, uh, from Aaron Barlop. Parents were encouraged to make a plan B, but with no information, parents can't make plans. I think what we're trying to say is we were going to give you the information tonight. Now that information's pushed back by one week. That's still July 23rd. That's still a full five weeks ahead of the start of school. So there would still be opportunities to make plans. Uh, from Tiffany Sholly. Are children going to be required to wear masks to return to school at this point? With whatever information you do have right now, we just got the info at three o'clock. There does appear to be heavy emphasis on mask usage. Um, so I can't say with a hundred percent certainty, but I could say I'm pretty sure if there's a state mandate for mask wearing, uh, in, in public spaces, which would include school buildings, that there's a good chance that masks are going to be requested or required to be worn. But until we put out the final plan, um, I don't want to say that with 100% certainty yet. Um, and, and Michelle Terry, I know you wanted to make a response and I, I'll give you that in a second. I just wanted to give these folks as I'm getting them. Ada Bonson, if we move to online classes, is Mifflin County School District going to provide computers, internet like other school districts? Uh, Doug, you want to talk about the computers part and the internet part? Can you hear me, Doug?
Yes, um, we, we have computers. We, we've started to set to the side. Um, obviously we're, we, we did the two surveys. Uh, we would start with, um, you know, the greater needs, uh, families and then work our way through that. We currently have 1,100 computers for that. We are also possibly will be purchasing additional computers for that. We're working with the county on a grant to provide some computers as well. Um, so we're working steps to do the different things for devices. Um, the county, we're working with the county for some hotspots for internet and things of that nature. Um, and we've also discussed possibilities of getting some hotspots and stuff like that for, um, low income needs and families of stuff that, that need it.
Okay. Um, yeah, yes.
Hey, could I ask, could I ask Norris, Oris Nepp to address the flag issue?
Yes, but then we also, Mrs. Terry asked us to.
I think it was, I think it was Terry Stires.
Or say something as well. But yes, Oris can address that. And then let's give Michelle a chance to make her comments.
Mr. Nepp, you there?
Yes, I'm here. Um, first of all, Mr. Fuller, I, I hear what you're saying and I agree with you wholeheartedly. Uh, the test, uh, for enforcement and prohibition is whether or not, uh, that flag, whether somebody's wearing it on their shirt or brings it into the score, whatever, is that it causes a disruption to the educational process. And if you have students that are saying that this is intimidating them or, or is bothering them and interfering with education, then certainly, uh, that would probably qualify under the law to put a prohibition in place the same way that one would do with the swastika, which is what I think one of your examples were. Because of the fact that it is considered by many people to be, you know, the Virginia battle flag i- is considered to be very offensive by a lot of people. Uh, the other comment, uh, that I have is, is the, the, the heritage issue that a lot of people bring up. One of the things perhaps the school could, uh, could do is to point out to folks that that monument in downtown Lewistown, the soldier.
That monument in downtown Lewis Town, the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial is there for a reason. There was a group called the Logan Guard that were the first to respond to Abraham Lincoln's call. To go and defend the Capitol from the approaching Confederate Army. So this area of Mifflin County does not have the heritage of flying under the Virginia battle flag, quite to the contrary. And, and, and that's one of the, so it falls on deaf ears a lot of times because that isn't the heritage for our re, our, our region. But the test is whether or not those, those students. Uh, you know, are, are feeling intimidated. And if, if they go, go to the administration indicate that that has happened. Then the administration can take action and enforce that because of the fact that no student. Uh, is allowed to be intimidated, uh, for racial reasons. And if that is the intent. Uh, of those wearing that, that symbol, then certainly the school district is more than able under the law to do something about it.
Thank you for those points of clarification.
Can I say something as a parent, just on that topic real quickly?
Lindsay, is this Lindsay?
Yeah, yes, this is Lindsay.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, thank you. So I just.
I need your last name. I'm sorry.
Lindsay Phillips.
Thank you.
Um, I just, um, I was wondering if that could be, could, there could be follow-up on this. On consideration for changes in that policy with consideration of what Mr. Nepp was saying, as well as, um, what Mr. Fuller had presented. Um, aside from individual stories, we have, you know, individual students coming forward. We already have accounts from a staff member of the Mifflin County, Mifflin County School District who has witnessed. Is the fact of intimidation. And so I think even without them coming forward, I was wondering, um. It would be possible to examine that policy regardless.
Uh, the short answer, you know, yes, that any policy can be examined, uh, if the board should, should wish to take it up. Um, and I certainly don't see any problem with that. I think probably with regard to the entire topic. It has to go beyond a policy examination as well. And, uh. There may be issues that we need to address, uh, through our, uh. Trauma teams that we're trying to develop that, that are hitting on, uh, mental and psychological health of students. We also can probably have easily incorporate discussions as we consider. Uh, curricular changes, professional development. So the short answer is yes. It can, it can be discussion with policy, but it can also go further than that and deeper.
And I appreciate that. And I'm speaking in specific to the, um, issue of the Confederate flag.
Diane Sheer.
Today. What's that?
Uh. This is Diane Sheer with AMCE and Dell Fuller. Um, I'd like to propose so we can keep this meeting moving, but, um. I'd like to propose a time that admin and AMCE and Dell, uh, we get together and discuss this with administration and then get back to you at a. Quick, you know, not too late of a time because we are definitely in favor of keeping all kids. Feeling safe and secure in the building.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I, I have to, uh. I have to move because we're running so long that my battery's dying. So hang on.
I had a question.
Um.
Just a minute, please.
Hang on. Michelle, did you want to make any comments now that, uh, with regard to that issue? Before we take the next person's question?
No, we can move, we can move on. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I wasn't trying to ignore you. I was just trying to make sure the public got their opportunities to ask. Um, okay, uh, who just spoke up and asked if they would like to ask a question?
Um, this is Jesse Heil.
Okay.
Um, with children that have asthma and things, are face shields an option besides masks to be worn if school reopens?
My understanding in a very brief reading, remember I just got this update at three o'clock today and I was still doing. Other work in preparation for tonight. So I literally only got to read the updated info. Uh, my speed, like doing speed reading, which means I could have missed things. But I did see a reference that, uh, in, in that documentation. That if, if a child has a, uh, medical condition falling under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Then it would trigger, uh, something called a 504. Uh, so the short answer is based on what I saw, and I can't be a hundred percent certain of everything that I saw. Uh, ma'am, Jesse, but, uh. If, if the, if the, if the. Medical issue falls under what is defined under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Then certain exceptions are able to be made and it's done through a 504 plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, could I go ahead and Terry, I have a few more that were being relayed to me from the chat box?
Sure.
I mean, I don't know what else to do. It's public comment. They're allowed to make.
What you're, you're exactly right. And there's a lot of concerns and a lot of questions and.
There are. And a lot of the questions, unfortunately, we can't fully answer tonight. We should be able to have a lot more answers by next week. Once we've had adequate time to review the updates.
Right. I would just remind, I would just remind the public that it, that it is a public comment period. It's not meant to be a question and answer, but we've been flexible with this because of the, the, um.
Anxiety.
Anxiety and the interest in it. Yes.
Right. Normally we wouldn't answer your questions. That's correct. We would just allow you to make comment and we would take them under consideration. Uh, Violet Davis, uh, asked if and when there is a vaccine, will all of our students be required to. Get the vaccine to return to school? I know there are legal fights with regard to vaccines and anti-vaxers. Oris, I don't know the answer to that.
At this point in time, I don't think that we have the, any answers to give, uh, from, uh, you know.
That's probably going to be decided in a courtroom. Or through legal advisement.
I, I would assume that it would, they would be treated the same as, as the regular vaccines al- already are. Under the circumstances, but on the other hand, given the fact that this is supposed to be, uh, extremely contagious and transferable. That, you know, they, it may change the, the way that, uh, vaccinations are required by school. But right now, you know, there, there has been no edict either from the state or federal government for the school district to follow.
Okay. Um. Aaron Barlop, I have your message. I have a secretary who checks my voicemail constantly. I do not. I don't, I don't have, she normally gives me a note if somebody's calling. Um. If you can e, I gave my email earlier, J A E 13, Aaron. If you, J A 13, J A E 13 at Mifflin County, M C S D K 12 dot org. If you could email me your phone number, I will be happy to give you a call. Um. I think this is Dana Jasper or Diana. I'm not sure. Uh. Middle-class citizens could use help with devices too. Um, I think Doug, I don't think this is limited. Is it limited specifically to low income? The devices?
The ones that we own, we are not limiting, um.
The ones from the grant are.
The ones from the grants are, um.
So we may be able to help some folks out. With, with hardware, correct? Doug?
Uh, yes, but we have limited amount. So.
Yep. Okay. So, uh, Dana, make sure that you notify whoever the principal of your child's. Or children's buildings are. Make sure you notify them about concerns for technology, uh, to see if we can make any kind of arrangement. Um. Another comment, um. Gina Moore, as a teach, this is from Gina Moore who teaches for us. Uh, as a teacher, I really want to see my students in person. However, I really want to be able to attend their graduation. Uh. I'm asking that our plan be as conscious as possible. Which that's what everybody's goal is. Uh. Uh, I've, I've got a statement written by a superintendent in another district. Um, that I was planning to read for everybody last, next, next week. Uh, I was originally planning to read it tonight, but I'm going to hold off and read it next week. But the gist of this is everybody is conscious and we're trying to do a conscientious and good job with this. But as everybody knows, there are. If a district has 5,000 parents, we're going to have potentially 5,000 different opinions on just like what the right plan is. Uh, the thing that I'm going to read for you, you'll, you'll understand and it'll make sense. From Lori Hartman, please consider our teacher safety, especially our older teachers or ones with health issues when making your plan. Thank you. And I can assure you, we are trying to do that. I can tell you that Mrs. Sheer, I believe sits on the Health and Safety Committee. We've been trying to engage teachers in the committee process and in planning process. So it's not that we are turning a blind eye and not concerned about our teaching staff. I think Mrs. Sheer could confirm to you that, uh, in her working with the administration, that. We have no intention of ignoring the health and wellbeing of our staff.
No, in fact, um, we brought the, the meeting, the committee. Um, plan to the teachers the other day. And the teachers themselves came up with some of the concerns and we brought it back to administration and they were incredibly, um, open to changing things. So that teachers and students' safety is, is a major factor. Staff, not just teachers, but the entire.
Yeah, the support staff too.
Anybody that's in that building.
Yep. Uh, Gina McKnight has apparently had her hands up for a while. Gina, can you go ahead and ask your question?
I am another parent that's doing a charter cyber school because of the uncertainty and the plan B being very vague.
Right.
Um, I am an essential worker, receive no extra money. There is no way I can possibly go buy my child an iPad. Even if I took a hundred dollars out of every paycheck, it's just not happening in five weeks.
Right. Um, we, we can.
And the charter is our only option.
Understood. If you are, if you are interested in finding out what we could provide for you. Because we do provide iPads or laptops through our MCO or Alpha programs. I would very much encourage you to see if you could reach out to Chris Gill. Mr. Gill could really fill you in, but you know, ultimately any parents, what they choose is what they choose. I'm not trying to, uh. Put down any parent who chooses a charter school or a cyber school. What I'm trying to make sure that the public understands is that that money does leave the district and. It does come, come from the district taxpayers. That was all.
Well, I am a tax, I am, I am a taxpayer.
Correct. You'd be paying it, but so would your neighbors.
I'm losing money if I have to go buy equipment. I'm losing money to pay for childcare because I am a worker.
Right. Right. Now we, uh, we do provide laptops or iPads, uh, for many of our students in our Alpha and MCO programs. So if you did want to talk to Mr. Gill, he could at least give you all the information and then you could, you could review what he's given you. And if, if that still wouldn't meet your needs, then that's, you know, we understand.
And on the Confederate flag, I have a comment on that. Why can't they put, um. Another course of that into the accret, in the curriculum to re-educate people about the Civil War and the Confederacy. I think everybody's a little bit uneducated on the whole situation.
Uh, that's, I believe that's what I was trying to, uh, say when I think it was Jesse. Earlier that brought it up. No, it might not have been Jesse. I'm not sure, but, um. That's why I said it's, it's beyond policy. We, we also need to look at it within our curriculum, which is what we teach. So.
Right.
I, I don't disagree with you. I, I, I think we should look at it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, Gina. Um. Lindsay Wilson, uh, she writes, please. Sorry. Please take in this consideration, once there is a plan in place for the start of the new school year. Please connect with parents on their tech, technology needs. Many things have changed with parents and their ability to afford internet or computers since COVID has hit. Absolutely, uh, Lindsay, we, we will keep that in mind. And that is why we have. Uh, set aside several hundred district laptops for this very thing. And we wrote a grant to secure additional laptops for this very thing. So good, good, uh, good point, and we are aware of that. Jessica, I don't know, do you pronounce your last name Putt? P U T T. Uh, with regards to a safety plan, does that include time in the cafeteria? And outside? Where do we say? I don't understand how we are spacing 23 to 25 kids six feet. Apart safely in these classrooms. That's an issue we do have to contend with, Jessica. Um, earlier recommendations we had, had given us the impression that we had the ability to do. Uh, six feet. Or as close to six feet as we could get, given what we, what our physical structures looked like. Uh, so we thought there was going to be greater flexibility to allow for, say, three or four feet to six feet. And then with masks and, and shields and so on, that we could, uh, accommodate for the. Spaces below, or the, the number of inches below six feet. But the stuff that came out today keeps re-circling back to six feet and mandatory mask stuff. So, um, that's why our original plan to come back four days a week may not be able to be doable. If these new, uh, updated guidelines or, or mandates. Force us to truly go to six feet, then we might have to look at, uh, bringing, you know, part of the student body in certain number of days. Another part of the student, student body and, and so on. So we, we're going to have to try to be as flexible as we can to meet all these requirements. Um. Okay. Um. Gina, I know that the district, Gina Moore, I know that the district is very concerned with teachers' health and safety. I want the public to understand we truly care for our students. Part of the joy of teaching is being able to see your students graduate and bump into them when they are adults. Point taken. Uh, and, and well said. Jessica Middlestead, uh, Lock Haven University is going back till Thanksgiving. And then going all online after that. But before that, they are doing classes both online and classes with a face mask or shields. And a lot of Mifflin County grads go there. That's just, Jessica's just sharing that information. Thank you, Jessica. I think I missed somebody else who had their hand up earlier. Um.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Who, who identify? Is this Crystal?
Yes. So my.
Crystal Ferentz, Amy.
Well, first I want to say thank you for everything you guys are doing. And if the kids are able to be six feet apart in the classrooms, do they still have to wear a mask?
Um. I think if there was a way to guarantee that they could truly always stay six feet while they're in the room. Remember we do educational activities with the kids. So I think if there was a way to ensure that we could do that, but I think all of us recognize that kids move, teachers need to move while they're teaching. Uh, sometimes they have to shift their attention to a different side of the room. Uh, but, but yeah, in theory, if we could truly keep them six feet or better, in theory, they would not have to.
Okay. Well, I, I understand that. I'm an education director and I'm going through the same thing, opening Sunday schools and Sunday classes. But my concern is them wearing a mask. That amount of breathing, they're in carbon dioxide the entire day.
Yeah.
What are the long-term effects for that?
Correct. One of the things that was mentioned to us.
That's my concern.
Right. Understood, Crystal. One of the things that was mentioned with us with regard to that, Crystal, is that as part of our plan. We are supposed to try and figure out ways to do mask breaks. Periodic mask breaks throughout the day. I don't know exactly what that'll look like. That has to be part of what we discuss in the plan. There are so many pieces, there are so many pieces to all of this. People would not, I mean, I think people would be shocked.
Well, and I, you know, you're going to have. Well, and I, you're going to have people that agree with you and that disagree. You're going to have what's best choices for everyone involved. I understand that.
Right.
But definitely the safety of our kids and the teachers, everyone involved. My just, my main concern, for me personally, I don't want my children wearing a mask eight hours a day.
Right. Understood.
It's not healthy.
Understood. But, but also just make sure you understand what I said earlier about following the Constitution, our obligation, rather.
Yep. I understand that.
So, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place that way. Okay. Gina McKnight asked another question. Would there be punishment for not wearing a mask or taking it off? I mean, we're, we're not going to be out to, you know, crack, crack anybody down on, on the mask thing, but at the same time, we do have to adhere to whatever the guidelines are. So, I don't know the, the answer exactly to the punishment thing. Certainly, we're not out to try to punish anybody. At the same time, we need parents to respect the fact that we, as officers of the state, are required to follow the governor's orders. And then also, Melissa Alaman, I think I'm saying it correctly. Is school starting at its normal time in August? As of right now, yes, our plan is still to have the kids start back on, I can't remember if it's the 26th? I don't have the calendar in front of me.
First day is August 26th. That's a Wednesday. Teachers start on a Monday.
The students start on Monday? Or the, oh, I'm sorry, the teachers are on Monday, the kids are on Wednesday?
Wednesday, August 26th is the first day for students.
That has not changed as of yet. Lori Hartman, have you considered doing just core classes in a larger area like in an auditorium, et cetera, and not electives? Thank you for working hard. I think everything's under consideration, Lori. I know even in what I saw today in that quick read, there was reference in the guidelines that they were encouraging us to make use of, use of large spaces where possible to allow for easier social distancing. As of right now, we've been trying not to eliminate electives because we want the kids to have them. But as this thing continues to develop, we don't know where the, the spike rates are going to be a week or two weeks from now or whatever. I don't think there's anything that's on the table. You know, it's possible we could go to cool courses. But as of right now, we're trying to give everybody everything. Jessica Putt. My other comment would be this. We understand that the end goal is for teachers and students to be in a classroom again when it's safe for both of them. But to say that it's imperative it's done now because if they miss third grade, it's all over for them is just nonsense. School and teachers and social interaction are vital for children's mental health. However, we all need to remember, school isn't the same for these kids right now, which is also going to be harmful for children's mental well-being and our teachers. Okay, thank you. That was Jessica. Thank you. I'm trying to make sure that I didn't miss anybody else.
Mr. Eastep.
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yes.
We've got, there are many questions that many people have, and we as board members and you have them also. Did we ask these people to email their questions in?
Yeah, I, I would be very glad to take those. If, if anybody, I think I understand what Mr. Stires is saying. We still have to do this agenda plus the next meeting's agenda. And like he said earlier, we normally don't use this time to answer questions, but we're trying. But obviously, it's eating, we're already an hour and 45 minutes in. And we still haven't done the vote on the, the item on this agenda yet, and we still have a lot of items to review. I will repeat again, my email address is J A E, James Allen Eastep, J A E, the number 13, at M C S D K 12.org. If you have questions you didn't get to ask tonight, and you email them to me, I will do my best to get back to you as quickly as I can. I just ask you for a little bit of patience because right now, through this pandemic, I'm receiving approximately 150 to 200 emails per day. So, I'm trying to do, answer them as quickly as I can. But just keep that in mind when you ask them, and I'll do my best to answer. Okay. Michelle, did you, hang on a second. Okay. Mr. Stires, I understand what you're asking. I had two more questions come in, and I'm just going to ask Melody Knapp and Tequila. I, I hope I can say that right. Tequila Sheer, could you email, there's questions from the two of you. Could you email those to me, and I'll try to answer them so that we can move on with the meeting? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Stires. I don't even know where we're at.
Well, I, I want to make sure that the, that our community understands that we certainly appreciate the anxiety and the concern and the worries that everybody has. And everybody has a lot of questions, including us. But, but us, our government, right now, don't have a lot of answers to this. So, we're going forward with what we have, doing the best we can with what we can deal with. And we would just ask for a little patience to allow our staff to, to try and sort some of these things out.
Yes, and I freely admit that I and the administrative team, we do not have all the answers, but we'll do the best to get them that we can.
Is there any other public comment at this time?
I have one more question.
I can't tell who's talking.
It's Crystal Ferentz.
Okay.
My daughter just received acceptance letter to the Medical Science to the Academy yesterday.
Okay.
Do you, when are you going to have any idea? Because they had on there that to go, I think it was August 29th for the parent and student and everything. Is that kind of abolished as well right now, or are you going to next Thursday? Let us know.
Next Thursday, yeah. I'm sorry. Next Thursday, we'll have a better idea of what our plan is. But Crystal, what I would advise you to do is reach out to either Norma O'Brien
Okay.
or Dan Patouchnik at the Academy directly, and they may be able to help you get a better idea. They too have to have their own plan that they have to.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to move forward with our meeting.
Okay.
All right. As the president of this board conducts this meeting, it will not be necessary to announce each director's names for each meeting. If however, a director or directors vote no, that director shall state. The president of this board shall call for the vote on a motion, and if the director does not vocally report a no vote, that director's vote should be considered a yes vote. The president of this board shall utilize roll call voting as required by law or at his discretion. Chair will now enter some motions to conduct this meeting according to these guidelines.
To move, Mary Lou.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second was Kristen, Amy.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Knapp? Mr. Knapp? Did we lose?
I saw him a little bit ago.
I think you lost connection with Mr. Knapp. His screen's on, but there's no microphone there.
It's not that he's muted, right?
Correct.
Okay, Mrs. Lachlan?
Yeah.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharp? Ms. Sigler?
Yes.
Mr. Stires?
Yes.
Mrs. Terry?
Yeah.
Mr. Wise?
Yes.
Okay. The only item we have is under other business, Mr. Stires. It's recommending approval of the appointment of Jade Ruben as the assistant principal at the high school for 210 days at a salary of $75,000, effective July 20th, 2020. And I should add, and I don't know, Oris, if I can just do that right now, add that, that the salary will be prorated accordingly because she's not starting on July 1st.
You could ask for that to be, the motion to be approved as you just amended it.
Could we, is everybody okay with the motion as I just amended it? Well, we'd need.
Motion as amended.
Okay, we have a motion as amended.
I think Mary Lou, I think Beth made the motion and Mary Lou seconded it, I think.
And we have a second.
Yes.
Question, discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Lachlan?
Yeah.
Mr. Nickel?
Yep.
Mrs. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Sigler? Mr. Stires?
Yes.
Mrs. Terry?
Yeah.
Mr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Knapp? Okay.
And I have a request for the public while you're on now. Board members kind of need to leave their mics unmuted so that they can vote. But if you're in the public, if you don't mind, if you could keep yours muted so we don't get background echo. And then if you need to speak during the next public comment, then you can just unmute. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that motion passes. Is there any other business to forward to board at this time? Is there any other public comment at this time? Hey, this meeting's adjourned.
Okay, so now we go to the next meeting, which is our committee of the whole.
I'm just asking, do we want to move right into this, or do we want to give people a break?
Do the board members need a quick break to, like, run to the restroom or get some water or anything?
Good idea.
Okay, I don't have, what time is it exactly? Somebody say 8:22?
Yes.
Okay, how about we reconvene in about five to six minutes?
Okay.
As close to 8:30 as we can get.